He just, Evelyn just needs to remove Mark. Analyst.
Demote me.
Sorry. We granted your wish, now you have to leave. Okay. I'm going to call the Measure J meeting to order at 5:35 PM on Wednesday, May 11th. Can we do the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. With liberty and justice. We have a roll call, please. Oops, I froze. Roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Futterer. Commissioner Marshall.
Here.
Commissioner Robin.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Gazan.
Here.
Commissioner Craig.
He's in the waiting room.
Yep, he's logging in. And Vice Chairperson Soto.
Here.
And Chair Bernstein.
Here.
Thank you.
And we now move to accept the agenda. We have a motion to accept.
I move.
I second.
One favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Agenda accepted. I mean, there is no approval of the minutes, I think, because we'll do that next week. Is that correct? Okay, public comment. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Measure J Commission on agenda items and items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Although the commission values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Three minutes are assigned for each speaker. Do we have any public comment?
No public comments received this evening.
Okay. So I will do my welcome comments and this is in part the reason we have this meeting, the special meeting, and I did want to mention that Commissioner Gazan and I sat down with the city manager to go through the Measure J process and sort of explain it more fully, which was very useful. And just to clarify for everybody, since the city manager had never been through the whole process and two council members have not been through the process and the other two only went through it once, that that's part of why there's been some confusion. So just to explain briefly, we are governed by bylaws and a city ordinance, which mandates certain things that we have to do, which includes such as making the recommendations and reviewing the audit and certain duties which we can request a meeting with the city council. And there's a list within the ordinance that is defined. It can be changed, but there is an ordinance that goes through now. And just to clarify that what we've always had was a roadmap that was issued each September where we would review the schedule for the year. And the whole year from September through May would work up to making recommendations for the following year's budget. And so in that in May is when we would have the joint city council meeting. The last one we actually had was in May of 2019 when we made recommendations to city council for the 2019, for the 2020, May of 19 for the 2019-2020 budget, which was the last one. We submit our recommendations, engineering and staff submits theirs, usually after the six, eight months of working through it, they are the same or very similar. And then city council makes the final. I'm actually, the one in May of 2019, they accepted all of our recommendations. There was a slight difference from staff or that added in something that they did not approve. So obviously in 2020, we never had our meeting and at the end of 2020, we were still somewhat, there was money put back. All the money in 2020 May was taken out of the Measure J and moved into the general fund as an emergency measure. In August, they realized they were getting some funds back and those funds were moved to the downtown park. The Measure J Commission did not recommend that, but the city council wanted to do that. And then in, then over the next eight months through May of 21 is when we worked on basically trying to recommend projects to be reinstated. And at the May of 21 city council meeting, there was not a joint meeting. The city assistant city manager presented approximately $10 million in projects that we recommended. There was 7.2 million from the 2021 year remaining and another 16.5 from 21 to 22. City council in May of 21 did not want to approve just partial use of, they wanted the complete use and they also of all the funds. And so that they understood the full picture and wanted to give policy direction. And that's when they had brought up the September 21 potential joint meeting, which never happened. Unfortunately, at this point, I think city council thought we were working on making recommendations for next year, which we haven't done. That's what we have been asking to do. And the city manager was a little bit unclear. We haven't actually seen a Measure J budget estimate for next year. So I think at this point, what they're now realizing that what the city manager and engineering do want us to do is in addition to what the work we've done on the community projects is to make recommendations for the regular Measure J funds for next year. And those funds would basically include the 17.6 that is remaining from the 21-22 fiscal year as well as whatever estimate is in the next year. We don't necessarily have, I mean, the historically, we did make recommendations up to the full amount. That may not happen this year. And while it's supposed to happen in May, I believe the city manager and city council have discussed or discussing potentially, since these projects aren't going to happen over the summer, extending that they can allocate, they have the Measure J funds and they can determine the exact uses come September. So that's where we're at. And that's why you see in the special meeting agenda, there is an extensive list of projects, many of which we've seen before, some of which we haven't. And I believe Joel, the total you had in there was about 26.4 million. And that, so that this is where our roadmap is now. It's sort of condensed. And what are, what I'm going to recommend is we look at the list from Joel. The list of community initiated projects that we had done before, which are not necessarily outlined in this. And the projects that we had in our community initiated that we thought were higher value and wanted to move to the regular Measure J funds. So we have three different pots and we will come up with a recommendation to city council. Again, it is up to them. We only make the recommendations. They make the final decision. And hopefully there will be a joint meeting. I'm not sure of one being scheduled at this point. So that's just an update on what has happened. And I did detail this all in a memo to the entire city council so that they are also more familiar with the process and historically what happened. So that's the end of my comments. Now we move into the new business, which is going to be the five-year capital improvement program. And that is the large document that is in the packet that Joel did. What it seems to me is that, and just maybe somebody, other commissioners can comment, is that maybe the best place to start is with this, and we can ask questions. But before we move any, make any final recommendations on this five-year, we incorporate what we have done the last few months with the community initiated projects and any other regular Measure Js that were in there. Commissioner Soto.
Thank you, Chair, for that very comprehensive summary. I hope it clarifies a lot, both for the community and for council. In terms of kind of next steps in prioritizing discussions, I'm a little concerned. We have a lot to get through today. And so I don't know if kind of the order in which you described it, we were thinking of kind of the order of importance, especially for the CIP that Joel put together for us. There's new projects that I think we really need to spend some time today discussing since we've never looked at those or discussed those before. And, you know, I recognize like timeliness is a concern to try to get these recommendations to council, but we talked about the community initiated projects for several months. And so if we don't get to it today, I think that's probably fine. But I do want to make sure we feel like we can have all the discussions we need for these projects in the year one of the CIP. And then and then I have a question for Joel. Joel, it seems to me like everything up until I don't know, maybe 2219, the fire station one is all things that we looked at before in some way, right? And then everything after that is new or newish.
That's an accurate statement. And just for the record, 2220 is the Measure J initiative community project. There is a, it's the, it is there, the million dollars there. So there's a sheet for it and it's a recommendation to move that forward. So it is there.
Yeah. And just to clarify, if we don't have, I mean, if we can't, we're not, we have another meeting scheduled for next week. And I am working under the assumption that we are not going to finish this today. And they have to make that up. And again, that's, you know, with those community initiative, that's a perfect example. Engineering may say, we just want to put a year in now, a million dollars in now. We operated because we had a million dollars from the current year, 22, 23, and a million dollars from one before, that we want to allocate all of that for now to these community projects. We also have to understand, just to be clear, that when we allocate, the whole purpose of the CIP, I think, in the five-year plan was so that we weren't creating a whole lot of projects that they just don't have the bandwidth to do and we're leaving money there. That said, if we feel like we wanted to make sure this money for the community projects was, and, you know, recommended that it be enshrined, we can still do that, knowing that engineering isn't going to actually get to it for maybe two years, two, three years at least. So I don't, I don't, I want to recommend with all these things, they have a bandwidth issue that they can't necessarily do everything at once. And that's why some of these things are also set asides, which I think is an ideal way to do it, because something like the library of Fire Station One will is a huge expense. And it's probably very smart to, to put the money over three, five years so that when the project is really in full swing, all the money is available.
And just for sake of discussion, I guess, years two to five are essentially just, you know, we're programming it or not programming it. We're saying that that's what we think we need in those years. It could change over the course of this next fiscal year. And it's just, it's to guide us and to think so that the major commission can understand that the next year, that's what we will be asking for in year two. But it could change because something might happen in year one. We might not have used the money or we're setting it aside. So next year we might set more money aside.
Yeah. That was also part of our regular roadmap. Every October, there would basically be a true-up from engineering, where they would go through the previous year and say, this was more, this was less than what we thought. And and there would be, you know, we would have to adjust it. So I, I'm going to suggest we start going through these one by one. And just, you know, obviously, and then work through it. Is there any other comments before we do that? Okay.
Well, I think we've already been through the first page several times, haven't we, Joel, for the last two years, two or three years? Those are the new projects.
Yeah, I think it's still beneficial to go item per item.
We, we have, for instance, we've not actually had this library numbers like this. So, and I'm not saying we don't, but this actually is very helpful to know why we're setting aside for 1,138,000.
Yeah, I think my explanation will be brief on those that are very sophisticated and maybe more if you have more questions. I think I'm fine going through that and it's year one that we're really going to concentrate. So we can get through that to be creative, not.
And just a quick question for next week. Nancy, is it possible to have a projection of Measure J funds for fiscal 2223?
I have it now. So I would like, if it's okay, I would like to share my screen.
Sure. Yes, of course.
I'm glad I asked.
Do you see the Measure J? Do you see an Excel schedule?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So we had our actuals come in with a, you know, an extra 7.2 million dollars. So 2122 estimate, we estimate that the, we had a budget, revised budget of 17.8. We estimate it's going to be coming in at 19 million. And then the amount that we did use is still a 728, which will carry up here. And those, these here are the expenditures that were budgeted for. So that brings us, we didn't, we didn't approve a lot of the projects. So that brings us a balance of 18 million left over in 2122. So that gets carried over to 2023. Our estimated revenues are 20 million for 2022 with the sales tax and the unexpended amount we're going to reallocate is 18 million. So that brings us down to 27 million. But Joel does have the 6 million and the 1 million included in his first year forecast on his summary memorandum page. And so basically, if we take those out, we have about an extra 34 million dollars to spend in projects for 2223.
That's the total you're saying.
Correct.
So just to clarify the and going back to the community projects, because when we carry the money over, we're still just keeping the community at a million, even though we do have, there really was 3 million there.
Well, we have to get that approved by council. That has to go, make sure that we get it approved. But if you look on my schedule, estimated, I'm, it's going to be estimated spent in 2122. And then we'll get carried over. So that's included in the total.
Oh, I see. Okay, got it. Okay. Yep. Okay.
Does anybody else have questions?
So we, we do have 3 million, though, including next year's budget for community projects.
It has to be approved by council, whether they.
Right, but that's what is proposed, 3 million, correct? Okay, just want to be clear.
I have 2 million, so maybe.
Well, because you appropriated it in 202021.
2122, 2223. So really, it's only 2 million.
Now, if you look at the you carried over 7 million from the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that, but I did, but here you're only showing two. And then that would be part of the, the next million.
But we should have a million from 2021.
Right, which is going to be part of this number.
But that's three years' worth.
Right. So you got two here. And if a council approves it, we'll add the extra million in here for carryover purposes.
Yes.
So roughly 33 million.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Okay, I think this is helpful and it's also good news.
Very, yeah, this is incredible.
Okay, if I, I'll try to figure out how I stop sharing my screen.
Really, because I keep trying to click it off.
I'll be right over.
Maybe Evelyn will come in here and help. We have, let's see here, more.
Well, Joel, maybe you can start talking about the library remodel.
Thank you.
So does anyone need an explanation? Or first of all, did anyone click on the link and go see the full five-year CIP?
Yes.
51 projects, about 333 million worth, right? One of the things that I was describing to council is that I have five engineers that are working on maybe 10, 11, 12 projects all at the same time. So that was sort of the capacity issue that we have here internally. But all these projects that you're about to see were included in that draft, with the exception, I believe, of the last three, which is the radios, the positive theater and the engineering project manager. So would it be helpful if I share my screen to scroll down and look at it? Or we just, everyone has it up on their screen?
Yeah, I guess. I mean, we all know about the library and I know it's about 10 million. So I only have two questions on this.
So, yeah, so the budget that we have for the library is for two years and it is a matching to a grant that we're working on, that the library submitted or the director of the library. And if you get it, then I think in August we'll know. And that's, you know, it's a matching fund.
So you would have 20 million?
No, no, it's, they applied for 7 million and I'm applying for 7 million for Measure J total in year one and year two.
And the other one's the capital, but that, but you still, but you're still going to have the matching on top of the Measure J and the capital. There's a capital law from the grant.
The, yeah, the capital, if you look at the actual project sheet, what I call capital fund is the matching, is essentially the grant itself. So we have 7 million in a grant. A million for Measure J.
Okay. I think it's, I think it's, and, and do you think it will actually get completed by '24? Or is that just when you need the funding?
That's when we would start. Well, we would need the funding if you get it, you know, in August. We start in August, essentially, if you get the grant. But we would be, we need to design it, we need to bid it. So I think the deadline is on 26. We need to be done with at least the infrastructure. So we have time to construct it. But if we have the money upfront, that's when, you know, if we're bidding that project, then the next year or two, we'd like to have that money already available.
Okay. Are there any other questions in the library? Okay, I would ask that people keep notes and then we can go through and instead of trying to recommend each one individually, have the full picture and then we can go through it with any other changes. Okay.
And I'll start with the CP number, what we call the CP number, city project number. And the decimator is generally, or it's, the first two are the year that the project was conceived and the last is the quarter when it was conceived in that year. So 1806 is Victorian and Ruth Hardy Park Restrooms. The commission has already funded several restrooms. This is a continuation of that program. And we estimate about 950,000 for construction. And we think, because we already have the plans and we're basically using the exact same design, we would be able to construct it next year.
Yep. And now are those, I mean, now that you've done this before, do you believe those costs are accurate? And a couple of times they've gotten.
Yeah, they're always increasing. So I, yes, they're accurate as a snapshot today. Will they be accurate when we've got to bid? I don't know. And that goes for every single project.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions on the, on the Victorian and Ruth Hardy Park Restrooms? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to the fire tower training facility.
Yeah, fire training tower facility that was introduced a while ago. It's essentially, what is, the name of it implies it's a facility to train. The only, I have an asterisk on that one. If we fund the fire station, my understanding is that the fire department will have a training tower as part of that build out. So this project would not necessarily move forward, although I think if you speak with fire folks, they would say, we want that as well as our training immediately. But I think in the overall scheme of things, if we're funding a $16 million fire station that would include some sort of training facility, this budget may, we may elect or the commission may like not to move it forward.
I don't know that everybody's familiar with the fire station, the new fire station. So, I mean, I can explain it or you can.
Well, when we get to it, I think it's further down, I can talk about it and we'll just, I know what I've been asked from the fire department.
Okay. The fire, when we did the first time, we did the fire tower training, it was 450,000. So is it a different one or just prices?
It's, the prices are staggering. They're absolutely staggering. I'm not even comfortable that 750,000 is a number just because of just supply chain issues, construction, everything, inflation. I'll repeat myself. These numbers, we were very good at them a long time ago, when we were estimating for construction. Right now, everything's out the door. We do our best. We try to use current numbers. We're surprised every time. And I'm going to throw a shocker at you in a little bit. So that, that's going to help, that conversation is going to continue.
Any other question? On the fire tower, this might, this might not be fair to direct it to Joel. But now that there's been, what comes after price creep, price, priced tsunami? Now that what was 450 is 950 and maybe 950 is not realistic anymore. At what point does driving to Indio for training there make sense?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question that I would not have an answer to. And also, I mean, to consider is the, if we fund the fire station and we incorporate construction of a training tower there, then this project essentially goes away.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Next one is the keyless entry phase two.
Yeah, so we've already funded phase one. It was very successful. We did a lot of city facilities. This is another project that would do, I believe it's the fire station and another dog. We just want to get it up to current standards. And that's been a project that's been around for a while. So I put it under deferred because we might start to design of it, but we'll need more money and that I'll bring it back next year to fully fund it.
Was this one of those ones that we actually was approved and then taken off?
I think it was, yes.
Yeah, I think a few of these were.
I think most of the ones we're discussing right now are in that category. But I think, because of this conversation, I just wanted to start fresh and these are the.
That's perfect. It makes a perfect sense. Thank you. So so we've actually already discussed this. I mean, I'm not sure if Commissioner Marshall is there, but.
We've discussed all up to 2003. So everything up until 2003 has been approved already.
So Commissioner Marshall is on you. I speak. There you go.
No, it's been there for a while. So I have no questions about it.
There, there was a whole group, just so you know, that in May of 2019, we recommended engineering conferred. We had discussed the whole year that were approved. And then when the pandemic hit in 20, in March, they were taken all out. So we had already discussed embedded and went through them. And that was one of the ones that's on this list. And you probably did even before that.
It was before that, yeah.
So the next one is the Demuth Park ADA access phase two.
Right. I think the explanation pretty much is that it's just our park is deficient in ADA. It's a big project and we require more funding next year as well. So that is a project that we need to take. So fixing ADA access to the facilities.
Yeah, and just to save time, we should just skip forward to 20-03 because all of these have already been approved by our commission and council. These fall under those projects that were stalled.
I can skip. I don't want to skip 1928 because that's a shocker that I want to bring to you.
Yes, we did. That one we did not have a thought about.
No, we did approve the recreational field LED lighting upgrade.
I think some of the amounts have changed and that's.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm going to bring, well, as of when I prepared the document to now, we have finally seen an in-depth cost analysis of what it is going to cost to actually, all the lights with brand new systems. And the sticker price is 4,100,000.
And I think last time we thought, so this is just the first part of it. Last time we thought it would be a third of that, I think.
Right, because initially we were going to retrofit lights and we were going to improve existing. Right, cuz initially we were gonna retrofit it, lights and we were gonna improve existing conduits systems that were non existent. Cuz they were direct burial, so we were taking an approach that we were gonna fix what's there. And eh, over time, poles fell down with wind events. Um, it's not feasible to replace what's there, everything has to come down, has to get rewired, wired properly. And our consultant just, in the last two days, submitted the cost estimate that that essentially is four million one hundred thousand dollars.
So question is the one six then irrelevant?
Yes, it is relevant.
So we should change this to four million?
Correct, four million one hundred thousand.
Is is that still a one-year number or is that a multi-year number?
That is a one-year number.
One-year project?
Don's at that that project so much that if we get the funding next year, it will get constructed.
So all the previous, all the previous ones before that, which were approved, you're still just bringing back, but it's a set aside, they're not actually gonna spend it now. The ones going from nineteen twenty three all the way up to nineteen twenty seven. That, that has to do with projects that you're gonna put money, but it's not gonna continue?
Nineteen twenty three, nineteen twenty four, those are set aside, so those are monies that we're gonna continue next year and ask for more money next year. This one, because your column, we will spend four million one hundred thousand dollars next year to construct the lights, if that's the question.
My question is also on these, are these the lights for all of, is it just all the mall, all the courts and fields or just the ball fields?
It's, uh, yeah, the Muse Park and Sunrise Parks.
So it it's the eight softball fields as well as the Palm Springs Power Stadium.
Okay. Are there lights, the other? Tennis and stuff like that?
Um, the ball field up at high, does her Highland Park was already retrofitted with the LED lights. So these are the remaining ball fields, um, this is just strictly for softball. Field is, has nothing to do with any other sports, yeah.
Okay, that's a lot of money for lights.
Yeah, it is, and it's not gonna get cheaper, the infrastructure is, it's just deteriorating.
Yeah, the big delta in this project was that several of the light poles have fallen during the design of this. Project due to strong wind events, um, and we made the determination that rather than just trying to save the poles. Uh, we should just replace all of the poles which needed new foundations. And that was the main driver to the cost escalation. Because the original project was gonna use the existing. Light poles and clearly with the wind events we've been having. It's better to just replace them all.
Don, can I, can I ask you the question? When you say four million. And before it was one point six. How long is this number of four million one hundred thousand good for?
I mean, our our intention is that if this project gets approved and into the budget. The city's gonna put out the project in July, I mean, the need is so great. That we need to get to construction really quickly, so.
Right, but.
Full amount of money. Probably in the next couple of months if it's approved.
Right, Sid, and and there's always variables, engineering firms, consultants, and my engineering team takes the best available data experience. Uses that to formulate what we anticipate would be an estimated cost. Like I mentioned, we were pretty good at it, but right now I can't guarantee anything. I don't know that four million one hundred thousand is the number, maybe inflation goes down, maybe something happens. Costs go down and maybe we'll go under that budget, but um, you, I I I can't commit to almost anything right now. I I we do our job, we pay the consultants, we they they do their research, we come up with a number that we feel is good. But I've been surprised too many times now in front of this commission to to, you know, say for certainty, four point one is the number.
Yeah.
I think one of the things I would say is that we understand to keep changing. What I would would wanna know when we finally commit, that that is. You know, that there's not a huge delta from what we've committed and started. I understand you put it out today, they could come back and say it's six million or two million or whatever the number is, but once, once it's out there, you don't wanna be stuck. Saying we've got this project done and they come back and say, oh, we need another two million cuz we didn't, we underestimated how much it was.
Right, and and our design team is using the current design to evaluate costs, using United, doing deep dives, looking at cost of material supplies. We don't control, we can't control where a contractor gets pricing. They typically go out to a little bit and if we get a a good environment, there'll be three, four bidders and hopefully the low bid is is the right number. It's a, you really can tell if we're good or not, when you get the bids and they're pretty much around the same number, right? They're they're off by twenty thousand, thirty thousand, then you know what the number is correct. I've I've gotten bids where, you know, bids are three, four million apart, so. Yeah, it's it's a, it's a, it's a tough environment and it's, and I would be lying to you if I said four point one is, is the right number. And with all confidence, this is what I I need, I I think I have confidence in my design team, that is the number that I have before you today. And and that's all I can, I can really stand to to say, really.
And how long do you think this will last for?
What is that?
The new lights?
I I don't know what their lifespan is, maybe twenty years, thirty years, how long have the original ones been out there, Tom, you know?
I don't have that information, but I think these are. Original lights that were installed when the park was built, so. That has to be over thirty years, right? I mean, they 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 did replace fixtures and stuff like that, but the the poles were the original poles.
Generally, infrastructure, we say twenty to thirty years is a good number for deteriorating infrastructure and how much it lasts.
Right, it's helpful, any other questions on this? No, okay. Uh, now we go on to the roundabout at Indian Canyon.
Yeah, so the roundabout, um, has been around, so has approved the design of the roundabout, we've taken it, presented it. Uh, now we are coming back to measure J for funding to construct it, the the project is in construction right now. It's a a five-legged intersection that's very sort of the difficult to maneuver. Uh, the project was conceived a while ago, uh, and I was tasked to bring it forward. To to design and in construction, so we presented a council, council approved the design. And I can answer any questions that a commission might have.
This comes to a three million dollar project, isn't it right, two point eight?
Yeah.
Robin?
Uh, quite a question, Joe, when you you described this as in construction and approved. So is the question before measure J, whether whether measure J is endorsing measure J funds to go to this. Project which has been approved or is it still at some level of debate?
I think I'm bringing this to see if the measure G commission will endorse the project for construction funding.
Yeah, we had endorsed, we had recommended spending the money on the design. And that was as far as we got previously.
That's what I thought.
So this is, this is now the total budget and he's got. So it would be five, nine, eight, fifteen, it would be one point seven million coming from measure J over time. And another. Million from capital projects fund. Is that right?
Sorry.
Commissioner Futter, you're on mute, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, are there other sources of income like Caltrains or road people to support that, Joel?
We always do look for grants, a lot of our projects that we are building, like the the bridges, a lot of traffic signal. Each highway safety improvement, it's in the millions come from grants. So we're always looking for grants, uh, but they're not something that's guaranteed. If we find grants that fit, you know, the 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 criteria or we fit the country, the product fits the criteria for the design, we will apply for it. Of course.
Any other comments on this one? This is, this is one we'll have to, when we get through the old budget, because this is now we're at the point where we haven't really. Recommended anything on this, so there's, I think the following ones we may have discussed, but we haven't necessarily made recommendations.
Right, the the sunrise plaza HVAC improvement, children, cooling towers, uh, twenty oh four, I believe that one was. Forward before, um, and even the article tracks sewer one, so really the twenty two oh eight. The convention center projects we talked about before as well, so the sunrise plaza HVAC cooler twenty four twenty four. Is a project that we brought forward before and it's just to replace the the coolers at at that location.
Is that the total cost?
I think it's a set aside for, we're gonna ask for more money, total cost is about one point seven million, eight dollars or estimates.
And that was in the twenty nineteen approvals?
I believe so, I can look up back at my notes, but I think it was because I know the next one coming, article two, tracks over also was. So any questions on the twenty oh four, it's just a facility deferred maintenance type of project?
Let me just.
I mean, if it has to be, if it's necessary, it was not part of twenty nineteen approval. We did have a citywide HVAC water treatment program that we approved. Which might still even be on this list, I don't know.
Is that different?
I'm right now drawing a blank, whether it is different or not.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that was included in it, it was six hundred thousand.
Right. And do you recall, or if you're looking at last year's C I P, if we had it in there? I died.
And we don't have to get.
But it is a necessary product, it's it's really, it's the description is a pavilion, the leisure center, we're replacing the chillers and the cooling towers. Which are in one package units, so it's it's necessary, even if it wasn't brought before, it is necessary.
Well, we do understand that, but there there's a lot of necessary projects, not necessarily all of them we wanna recommend. To be used for, so I don't, I don't, I'm not saying this is one of them, I'm just saying.
Yeah, so the water cooling project that is different from the sunrise plaza HVAC improvement. It was brought before, I think it was, um, called the Pavilion and Leisure Center HVAC improvements or.
I think they're one of the same, but no, I I mean, yeah, we can, I I can ask, answer more questions and the the commission can always choose not to fund the project, of course.
The the water HVAC water treatment program is basically to address the condensation. The, um, and it it covered more buildings, so.
That that's a different program than this one.
Yeah.
I don't really know.
And I could, I can get you more information, I'll clarify for the next meeting, but my notes in my C I P says we've already budgeted. Or I asked for in two, when you went twenty to a hundred thousand dollars. Somehow, um, we brought this one before, but I can double check and have more clarification work for you.
Well, that that could be, we didn't actually make any recommendations for twenty one, twenty two, so.
Right.
So that could, I mean, city council could have, the ones that we did in, um. In May of nineteen were, um.
Yeah, I just have done, it's citywide HVAC water treatment program.
That's a different program.
We did the, at that point, we did the police department, the last ones we made, the police spot nine eleven, the downtown ballers, the keyless entry. The main library, we had set aside, the park restrooms renovations, Demuth Park, and upgrade the fire sprinkler systems. That's what was at our our last joint meeting.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, Jeffrey's correct, the, that. Pavilion Leisure Center HVAC was not part of the recommended projects at the last joint meeting. Yeah, but it was a, I think it was a considered project, but it didn't make the final cut.
Okay.
A recommended project.
Alright, so we're here today with in that project, that's a recommendation for staff.
Okay, are there any other questions on it? The the Arnicor tract one was another one that came up in the middle and I know, um. That is one of the council members is is encouraging that, we discussed it, I think we. We discussed recommending it, we never made any formal recommendations in that period yet, so my question on that one is, what is the, I should look at the total. What, what is the total that will come?
The total is seven hundred eighty five thousand dollars. And the the my list there says nine, but it's really, I think it's to to move it forward to construction. So the total for design and construction, uh, I have it in today's dollars, yeah, seven hundred eighty five thousand.
We did, you did explain this one pretty much detail in the past, I remember this.
Right, yeah, it, yeah, if I can answer any questions, um, and. The commission can approve it or not approve it.
Any other questions on this one? We discussed that. The annual pavement, um, which we've obviously discussed before. I do agree, especially, I think it should be six million, I think we should start to set six million a year probably, but. We don't have to decide that now.
Right, that's our recommendation.
But it's definitely, we've spent three million this year, but we're recommending six million for next year, right? There was one other year we did six million, I was just putting two years together.
Right, and I think, I need to go back and look, but I think we also spent six million last year.
I don't think that's what's on Nancy's chart.
So my chart included carryovers that we carried over as an appropriations and we'll go over that at the next meeting. I'll go through the audit with you and then also go through in detail how we, um, carried over the amount. So if Joel says we spent six, it means three million might have been from last year and three million from this year.
Yeah, and that budget you just presented though was just three million was actually budgeted.
I put in six million in the one I presented.
Or six million for next year, but three million for this year.
Right, because there was three million carried over from the prior year, which was already included as an appropriation.
Right, I got it, okay. And if we, can I ask a question, if if we do six million a year going forward. How does our, and when does our score start improving?
So if you don't spend six million a year, your score starts going down. So essentially, you're trying to maintain, uh, our our average score is a seventy three right now, um, over the next five years. If we continue to spend the six million dollars, our score goes up to seventy four, seventy five. But we're, we'll eventually, after that, our score starts going up because we're, we would have, uh, already reached most of our poor. Infrastructure, um, and the the score doesn't automatically jump up because older infrastructure, you you, uh, you. You touched, you know, and the prior year starts going down as well, so it's always a curve, it's going down, you're trying to maintain it at a certain level. So by spending six million a year, you 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 end up with satisfactory. And seventy three, seventy four is a P C I score that that works because. You pave it, it's at a hundred, the other ones are going down every year, so you're always chasing it. Every four to five years, we really evaluate our streets.
And will we need to spend six million a year in perpetuity or will we ever?
I think we catch up, like I said, right now, we're in the middle of a belt curve, so all the worst streets are being done around right now. Eventually, after five, six years, we start going down and then that money that that we're spending on paving, I'm gonna ask to shift it to, uh. Very ceiling, maintaining the infrastructure and making it last longer. So we are always wanting to spend, you know, six to seven million dollars a year on all our infrastructure. Uh, are all on 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 the paving processes, whether it be reconstruction or slurry ceiling or putting oil on the on the pavement itself.
Got it. Any other questions on the street paving? Okay, now we go to the convention center, these three items were presented, we didn't really discuss in detail. This is the, um, the carpet, the Houston Plaza, Jackery Eastern Plaza and the marquee upgrades totaling. Totalling one point two five million.
Right, those were brought forward by the the folks at the convention center. They they, I don't, I thought they were presented to the commission. I don't know if we had a speaker talk about them. I don't, I don't recall. But these are just infrastructure, facility maintenance type stuff that they want to to do at the convention center. I know. I know the commission had a conversation whether the convention center deserved funding or not. We're open, I can answer questions or or look at them, but I don't know in depth exactly what each one of these projects is.
Commissioner Robin?
Joel, do you know how the convention center normally pays its bills? They, this is all, this is largely deferred maintenance.
Yeah, so I don't have.
R and R and M that wasn't done. How do they normally pay their bills?
Right, right. I don't have a good answer for you. I don't enough information for the convention. Be able to to answer it right now, but I can pose that question and get you those answers by next.
I believe they do get regular funding from the city. It just doesn't come out of measure J.
You are correct. So basically, the city covers some of their their overages. So let's say their anticipated revenue is. Example, two hundred thousand and their expenditures are anticipated to be two hundred twenty five. The city subsidizes the twenty five thousand dollars. So each year they do come back and they have list of capital. Improvements that they would like to make. And sometimes they are requested by measure J and that sometimes they're requested by the city. So in this case, if we were to approve these expenditures, the city would cut them a check. And then we would give it to them for the carpet and then we would do a follow up, receive an invoice for all the services and that type of thing.
But if if measure J were not the funding source for these deferred maintenance costs. What part of the city would fund it? General fund?
Yes.
Like, so there's a, there's a, there's a routine mechanism for that. It just seems to me that. This is a case where measure J is not the routine mechanism.
That's correct. I don't, I don't ever recall measure J being asked. I mean, not saying we shouldn't do it, but I don't ever recall, and I think. I think it's close to the city funds about a million and a half a year, I thought, but I could be wrong. Commissioner Craig.
I wanted to ask, is everybody hearing an echo on me?
Yes.
I don't know why.
I think because you have two open, you have two. Two zooms open, Sid. Can you see you're at the middle bottom there?
I just see myself on the top.
Okay.
Are you having an option to remove one, Evelyn?
Nancy, can you tell me how to do that?
Evelyn can. Do you have a phone on Sid? Were you watching via your phone?
No.
You're watching with an iPad or a or a PC?
No, all I have is my computer that I'm looking at the screen.
Okay, I would recommend, Sid, if you're not talking, just mute and then we won't hear the echo.
He wants to talk.
Really? Well, he could talk. We could hear you. It's just.
You might have to, after you speak, you might have to exit and come back.
Okay. Before measure J was passed and the Jackie Lee Houston Park was opened. Wasn't the city paying for everything then?
Yeah, all these questions, we're gonna have to get back to you. We don't, I don't have the answers to, we're just.
Okay, because I just know, for example, the Jackie Lee Houston Park, I was there at the opening, and that was before there was ever measure J. So that's.
Yeah, so my my understanding just is that they regularly are require city funding. Which above what they income because. Their conventions also generate lots of room nights and revenue for the city. So I mean, it's a big economic driver and tourism and obviously other things. And they do, and they also do community services. They, you know, they had the vaccinations and the testing and the food banks and and all kinds of things. So. They regularly lose it. It had never really come to measure J before, and that doesn't mean it it shouldn't. But I think that's why there's some. There's some just confusion here because people have not seen it ever as a measure J thing, and I don't think people necessarily understand. How the convention center operates with the city and everything, so.
Yeah, when I, when they approached me, I just assumed it was something that was done typically, not necessarily the convention, but as we have other departments. I considered that sort of another branch of the city. He brought the 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 request forward. I I presented them to you. You know, the the commission can decide to fund them or not.
Right.
And just historically, I think probably twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, we did give them substantial funds.
Oh, okay. I don't know that.
And I I think also because you guys did that community, that really wide net of community outreach to get input from. The community wide, I think that sparked them to say, oh yeah, there is measure J, but I could be wrong, but I think that had a part of it too.
I think you're right. Yeah, you are right. Now, so are these. You, this construction is done by them, so this doesn't affect your bandwidth. They they manage the whole thing.
That was my understanding, but I think we still will have a a hand in it a little bit to sort of see what what's being done as as Nancy mentioned. So yeah, for the most part, my, what I wanted to do, if we did award it, it would go to them and we wouldn't have much to do with it as far as.
And they have their own, they have their own facilities, people and stuff, so it's generally their their work is done by them. I mean.
Correct, they hire their own contractors.
Okay, all right. So now we are at the relocation of fire station one.
Right.
Now, that's not something that I think. I I've had the presentation, but I'm not sure the commission knows. Do you want it?
Presentation, would that be? Is it something that the the fire department presented to to? To someone or just an explanation as to why the the project is needed?
Just an explanation, yeah.
Yeah, and Joel, maybe just for the sake of time, if you can just. Just give us a very brief rundown of why this relocation. I I know some of the background, but. Why this is happening. We've approved funds for fire station one for remodeling. So if you can just tell the rest.
I'll, I'll do my best. Really, the 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 most appropriate person to be speaking would be the fire captain or or.
Sure.
Chief to really explain the needs, but I think the, it's an understanding that the the fire station number one is sort of small. You can't really build out. It's inadequate to how's their facility. It's very old. It has just, it's just an old facility that's not. Capable of maintaining or it just needs to be upgraded, but in the current location, it's just the 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 site that it sits on is not adequate. So part of this is to find a new location, purchase property or work with someone to get the property. And then design it and build it. So that's sort of the the fire chief sent this sheet over to me. So twenty two nineteen was prepared by the fire chief. Explains why he wants it and he estimates the cost to be around sixteen million dollars.
We actually have about twenty million.
Twenty three, twenty three.
So I I can probably expand further. So basically, what they want to do is they want to join, have both fire station one and two combined into one better station. Fire station one is a class one historic building, so there's very little you can do to it. You can't expand. There's also certain limitations in the actual space of it in terms of. The that you can't actually have women firefighters there because there's no.
That's part of it as well, yeah.
There's no other sleeping quarters there. There's only one set, so that is a big issue. So the idea is that they would have two. They are looking. At property on Takwitz, and they're trying to see if potentially the tribe would donate the land. So it's sort of an unknown cost. It would also incorporate an emergency operations center and potentially this fire state, this fire tower and several other. Facilities that the city doesn't have. And. So that is a big reason why they want to do it. And then they would, they would actually join those and then potentially have another fire station in northern Pop Springs. But it would also apparently increase the response times as well.
And do we know roughly on Takwitz where this would be?
I thought there was land. I'm not sure. I think.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to, I thought you as well, but I don't want to say it because I mean.
I thought it was our most, something, I could be wrong. I could be, I I thought it was, it was tribal land there that they were hoping to get donated. I don't know. Where that is or if that it was just a comment.
Yeah, in the next meeting, if we have unanswered questions for this project, we can ask the chief to come back and and present. That way, your questions, you'd have answers to what you really want to know. Because I'm not going to do an adequate job of describing or or answer.
Yeah, and if you look at tall, yeah, if you look at the project sheet. The 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 note section of the project sheet, so at the bottom of the page, it says CIP dash.
Right, it's very, yeah.
That's the actual statement from the fire chief on the need for this project. So those were his exact email words.
And I was, I was.
Somewhere.
If you go to actually that that particular sheet twenty two nineteen, there is a detailed explanation there.
Yeah, but I'm sorry, Jim, you can continue. I'm sorry.
No, I was just curious. I mean, if if the fire department plans on keeping their. Training facility at the end of Alahow at the airport. I would just think that would be the logical place then for the tower. I would, you know, if they're thinking of more of a downtown midtown location, I don't know how tall those towers are, but that would be kind of slightly to have right. In the city. So I mean. Because there was a little talk of that. I would be much more supportive of that tower. At their training facility at the airport than, you know, something that's very visible from, you know, right in a neighborhood, basically.
That's a good point, yeah. Do you know how tall those towers are?
They were. I think they vary in size. I forgot the size of the one that we were looking at.
The original design was three shipping containers stacked on top of each other.
Late ones.
So those.
On top of each other.
Those three shipping containers, you know, the ones that are attached to like. Some of like.
That's about the the height that they were looking at.
That was the original.
I was gonna say forty feet approximately.
It's what they had the movie theater on at the air museum during the pandemic.
So it should be dangerous. There you go.
So it would be, I don't know, maybe it would, I think, you know, there is one thing that would be helpful. I mean, this is a major project. This is the biggest project that measure J would have ever approved. So. Just to, I mean, it's, it's, it's obviously something that has been. Vetted enough that engineering is putting it down. It's not, I don't think it would have just come, it's come.
Yeah, no, and I was just glancing over to the notes that this project's been twenty seven years in the making, according to the chief. So, yeah, in particular, she. He's gone through a whole history of why he brought it forward. But like I said, I wasn't gonna try to read it. Your question is best. If you really have specific questions, I can, we can have him come in and talk to you if he's available next week.
Well, and again, this can be just a partial. Funded from measure J, like we did with the fire station on the south side of town. So. The rest of the funds could come from general fund.
Yeah, it can be made. So, yeah, but for now, the way it's laid out, I'll be nasty with measure J over the next five.
I I think one of the things we have to look at is with the five year CIP, that when we are making the. Commitment, we're not actually going out five years, but if we're starting a project, it's a five year project. We have to be clear from the beginning. How we're at, because we don't want to say, yes, we're gonna commit five million, nothing more. There is no more money in the city. But we also don't want to say, yes, we're gonna commit twenty million dollars over five years without really knowing it. So that's a little bit difficult. Commissioner Craig, did you, or Commissioner Robin?
Yeah, to to your point, and this would be a request, I I guess really to Nancy. If you could, at at next meeting, basically, and I'm, what I'm visualizing is an overlay, a year over year, very simple sources and uses. Where you can project out, we have, we have a big bucket of. Unallocated funds. And a lot of big ideas that when you layer in the fire station. I don't, I don't think we can afford to do a measure J funded fire station. And much anything else. So if you, if you could layer in year over year for the next three, five years to give us a sense of very simple projections. Drawing on the buildup of reserves that we currently have. And see how how quickly we actually, if we in fact deplete it before able to conquer a hundred percent of what's on these pages.
It's basically taking the five year plan and overlaying what are a budget estimate, a revenue estimate on top of that, right?
Yeah, because I did a quickie myself, really headline numbers, and we can do a fire station, we can do roads and we can do community projects and everything else falls to the wayside. Because there's no money. And I probably missed a lot of, a lot of available funds. You have it at your fingertips and maybe for the next meeting or thereafter, we could see something with a headline like that.
Yeah, I mean, basically, the way they're doing, the way it has now, it would be twenty six million the first year, twenty one, twenty two. Nineteen, seventeen and a half, eight million is what they have going out for the five years from measure J.
But that, the the run rate of expenses versus the run rate of income, it probably crosses over very quickly.
Yeah. Well, we're looking about twenty million dollars a year now revenue, right?
Yeah, you are correct.
So that's basically everything. Commissioners Marshall, sorry.
Well, I, a question, and I. Sure, we don't have the answer yet, but I'm assuming station one is the one down on Indian Canyon. Is that the main coverage for the tribe, their casino, their new buildings? And how much has the city talked to them about contributing? Not only land. I mean, land would be nice, but. Yeah, this is a big.
That's a good question for the chief. I know that there was more conversations going on with the proposed arena. And I'm not sure what happened after that, but that would be an excellent question for the chief.
Okay, thank you.
And due to the recession that we think is coming up, we're gonna budget, budget going, projecting out for like twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five. Somewhat conservatively, because we don't have a crystal ball, as we all know. And so I had mentioned at the council at the last meeting, I'd rather project, you know, based upon what we know that the recession will be coming that next year, but the year after. That I'd rather project a little bit more conservative rather than spend all the money and come back and say, oops. And I'd rather do like a quarterly review with everybody here and just say, we thought it was going to be this much and here's where we are today. So that we can always add more projects as we go along.
Makes sense.
Makes sense, and it doesn't even have session.
Early.
I mean, we we you actually do a monthly thing. We just don't actually take it into full discussion. Commissioner Soto.
Joel, I don't know if this is just kind of commentary, maybe you can pass on to the chief. For when he would answer, but I think what would be helpful is having, you know, the city manager talks a lot about like having a strategy and a master plan for a lot of the. Capital, capital improvement projects. And so I'd be interested in kind of thinking of like the general assets of. The fire department, like what are the priorities in terms of capital improvement projects? Because, you know, it it's kind of hard for us to make recommendations of a training facility when it might be with another facility. And then relocating station one, but then that might mean down the road, another one in the north end, like it's just, it's kind of hard to think of them individually. So just, you know, and that's not even including the requested replacement radios, right, which is another three and a half mil. So just kind of thinking that that would be helpful for me in terms of understanding. How each one impacts the other.
Right, and and when I call about, I'll let them know that.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Marshall, did you have another question?
No, I just forgot to turn that thing off. I was just.
Sorry, I think, I think that would be helpful to understand the full thing. I mean, this is, so. The next is the the community initiated projects. So. The only issue that I'm gonna have, well, I guess we can do this later. So I know we're gonna discuss those, go back and discuss those later, how we want to present them. So maybe we should just skip over that for now. Okay, so I have, when we get to the, um, closet next to, I'll say it, the pedestrian and SR two S master plan project.
That one is new, and, um, staff, uh, received, or, or the city received a grant, I think it was around two hundred fifty thousand dollars to do a a full study of, of the city to figure out where there's issues, the full report, or the full report actually is going to council uh, on May twenty sixth, uh, as a presentation, or as a, a receiving file. Um, it basically identifies areas all over the city where there's deficiencies, where there's crosswalk issues, where there's sidewalks missing. Um, so it's almost like a mini, uh, sidewalk gap project, not a mini, but an expanded version of a sidewalk gap project, because it's identifying areas where, you know, there's a lot of areas where sidewalk's missing. Um, and it puts them all into one particular book that actually then numbers height with by priority and by, I think it also does it by, uh, by, I'm drawing a blank here, by different, uh, where the council members, district, sorry, I was drawing a blank. Does it by districts as well, so it identifies projects all over the city that could improve safety and lockability. So in a nutshell, that's sort of what we're doing, uh, and to be able to fund those projects over the next five years, we're looking at around five hundred thousand dollars, uh, a year. Now, actually, we're looking at one point five million a year, and we're asking, uh, we're actually gonna take it from capital and from another funding source, which is Measure A, so we're asking each one of those funding sources to give us, uh, five hundred thousand dollars.
But for, for five years, or?
Yeah, for five years, yeah.
And then it's.
Then I think we would be close to finishing those projects, but then that document might get revised and look at other areas, so if we're able to do those projects, we're, we're, we'd be, you know, that's, that in itself is a lot of projects, so it's, we're, we're asking for one point by million a year. And of Measure J, we're asking five hundred thousand.
Commissioner Soto.
Um, yeah, I, I participated in the most safe routes to school, um, community meetings, and I think I'm really excited to see the full report, um. And I would just note for other commissioners, there probably will be potentially things that came up in community initiated projects that were flagged in the safe routes to school process of, you know, troublesome intersections or other things, so there might be ways that some projects might get picked up, um, kind of in that scope of work, um, I just, when we were talking about safe routes to school, for some reason, I thought there would be additional funding to su- support some of that work. Was the funding, was the goal that we would eventually seek extra funding, or am I like completely out of place and, and remembering that, or were we just like waiting for the report for next steps?
We're, we're there, well, we're waiting for the report for next step, so a report can be used to go after grant funding as well. We're actually going after three different funding sources, um, one is like the tax, gas tax, Measure A. Um, and we're also asking capital, the city to fund it in, in a way, and then Measure J as well.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I meant like state grants or other.
Yeah, we, we can use that to actually go after state grants, part of the safe routes to school is, it's a known program that we can go after grants using the actual, um, the report itself. But we also have another report, which is a local road safety, uh, plan. That one actually Caltrans requires it now, and they gave us the money to do it, which actually identifies intersections and other areas that need to be approved, and we're gonna use that to go after funding as well. So the two reports together are identifying all the hotspots in the city, and we're gonna go after money, and part of the money is, you know, we're asking Measure J to contribute.
And in that, sorry, I was gonna ask that, that additional study that you just mentioned, is that the traffic, uh, traffic light study, or is that another?
Yeah, that's the traffic light study, or the intersection study that we're trying to get, we've already have grants, right? I, I forget, we're about working around thirty, thirty something intersection already from previous, but we couldn't move forward, find grants anymore if we didn't do this study that identified all the areas and then prioritize them, so that's what we've done.
Thank you, Joel.
So safe routes to school, a state or national program?
I, I wrote, I wrote. It's a federal program, though, yeah.
I'm going back, I have one more question. On the fire station, I'm trying to go back, if they move it, is that an asset the city can sell?
Historical, I, I'm assuming the city owns it, it could sell it, I don't know that it would, but I, I don't have an answer for it, but it, it, it'd be a city asset.
Yeah, preliminary discussions would be, because it's historic, it would be repurposed for some other thing, and it could be up to the city how that was repurposed.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so now we're on to a couple. These are very, very new, so pickleball court, pickleball courts is something that we have recommended as part of the regular Measure J funds. And, and that was one that we went to our, our community initiated projects that we said push out to regular Measure J funds. So what, what total budget are you looking at for that?
A million something. Let me take a quick look.
I don't think, we, we don't have a sheet on that, do we?
No, we did, but.
From CIP seventy nine.
Seventy nine. We actually, yeah, this, we use the actual information from the application.
Okay.
There it is, the total is one point four million, one point four five.
Okay, I think when we had discussed it, it was six hundred thousand to a million, but now you've, you've estimated, oh, you've added on.
Each one of our sheets, we try to anticipate contingencies, design administration, so, construction management, so we, we definitely bump each project cost up.
Okay, and we're not making any, any decisions or recommendations on where they go, right?
No, that's, no, not at all.
Well, we already, that was one of the ones we did, the only thing I'm gonna bring up is that we have that and Plaza Theater are two of the ones we recommended, but I'm not sure the other ones that we recommended made the list, so that's another discussion point, but why don't we go to the, the police fire replacement radios?
Right, and we did, uh, extended invitation to police, more about them, Nancy, receive any correspondence or any?
Um, I, I talked to Melissa, so I'll give you the short end of it, because Melissa is out of town. So she will probably join our next meeting if she is available, but we have a system called Erica that was used, um, uh, with several different, um, local Coachella Valley, um, uh, police and fire, and they all interact with each other, and then Erica dropped off. So each fire department and police department have to purchase their own radios and radio systems. There, there, uh, this, um, dollar amount includes the offset too, they're gonna be getting a grant for this. So the radios might really be a little bit higher, but when, um, we have our next meeting, we'll see if Melissa can join us from the police department.
Yeah. It seems, and I think the other thing, I think, Commissioner Geson and I heard is that it's a, um, doesn't take much engineering time to do it. Which is.
It's basically just purchasing the radios.
Yeah.
Which previous conversations that we've had on Measure J, there's been hesitation on putting, there's been, yeah, hesitation on funding things that are not actual capital projects. Um, I remember we rejected some parks and rec, um, I think there were trucks and vehicles, um, that were desperately needed as well, so, um, I, for why I don't understand why this wouldn't be coming out of general funds if it's a necessity, um, rather than Measure J.
Yeah. I tend to agree without knowing more from police and fire that building a fire station or other improvements to the police stations or things like that are far more um, in line with Measure J. Um, you know, what, what intention? But I think we have to wait to hear, because we're not, we don't have enough information on it, so.
And with regards to those cobotas for the, uh, park staff, it wasn't really that you guys rejected it, I mean, I know there was hesitation, but the reality was that the city found unspent funds in the vehicle budget, and they were purchased, uh, through some other funds that we were able to buy for that, so.
Yeah, I think that's a great example, that the city is very, um, creative on finding the funds when things are needed, thank you.
Exactly, I think there was hesitation, so now, um, the Plaza Theater. We had recommended a million, and I just want to reiterate, we had actually done over five hundred thousand two years, which this would be the second year. We had recommend, recommended that the Measure J money be, um, recommended once all the, assuming they got all the other funding. And, and I continue to believe, I, I do support the million, but I continue to believe that, that however that language is done, is how we should put it into our final recommendation, because it does look like this is gonna happen, and it does look like the million dollars will push it, could push it to the end. But what I would not want to happen is, is have, um, us commit a million, and they determine that they, they never get the rest of the money or, or something like that, which does not seem likely, but that, that's why I would reiterate in our rec, and I can, our recommendation be how we discussed. Commissioner Robin?
Yeah, I just paraphrase it is, if, if this is your, if this is the way you're describing it, uh, in my mind, I'm paraphrasing it, we're, we're the last million. Measure J is the last funding dollar.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, I know there was issues, I mean, I don't, you know, I know there was a reported in the press, you know, a private individual who was gonna donate, provided the city gave money of its own, which, um, maybe that would work in tandem, I mean, maybe that would work, but, um, and if that were completed, but if it, if there still turns out was another five million that they need, and I don't know what the actual numbers are, and they, and it's gonna take them ten years to get it, then I don't think this is the time to do it. Again, from what I hear, that's not gonna happen. So. Anyway.
Oh, yeah, I, I have one question on the amount, so this would, uh, Joel, I'm looking ahead at the next year, and I don't see it, so instead of doing five hundred thousand year one, five hundred thousand year two, it's just putting the full million here, right?
That's the way, yeah, that's the way it's.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
When we were originally discussing it, we were actually looking at twenty one, twenty two money. So that, that's all moved into twenty two.
I see, I see, yes, okay, got it, okay, thank you for that.
Um, now we go to the engineering project manager.
So one of our challenges is that we don't have enough staff, so I think we've presented to, I think, the, the, the council that if we could potentially ask for funding for our engineer, manager position from Measure J. Um, I don't think Nancy, and you can correct me, that it does not, uh, it's not necessarily, um, it hasn't been done, I don't think we've asked for positions from Measure J, but it's something that I think is, can be done.
Yeah.
Well, the thought process was that, what, what that is, a lot of the Measure J projects are not getting completed, and the money keeps rolling in. And I know that the Measure J commission would like some of these projects to start getting done. And with the limited staff, we figured it, uh, Measure J would be willing to pay for this position if it only worked on Measure J projects and started making these projects off the bar, right, park.
But I want to be very careful that that's not the only way I would use that position. Uh, you're talking about three hundred million dollar CIP budget with funding sources from all over the place, so it, it, it wouldn't be practical to have one position. Simply work on Measure J funds, I wouldn't be able to manage that, that's not the way that.
That was not my understanding, so we'll get more information to get back to you for the next meeting.
Right, but, yeah, so, uh, to be clear, i- if we have a position, they would work, you know, on, on many projects, and many of them would be Measure J.
Uh, Commissioner Geson.
Yeah, maybe this is one we table and not even take time to discuss it right now, I, I do think funding wages is setting a, a precedent that I don't want us to set at this point, but, um, I think let's just table that for now. And, and can we go back and discuss any of these other items, or is that what we're gonna do once we wrap this list?
We can absolutely discuss them. Yeah, that's, that's, you know, I, wait, it's seven o'clock now, though, is the only issue, and I think, I mean, we actually did get through a lot, and, um, I think if there, I, I don't know if there's anyone from the city that wants to check in, but we can work towards making a recommendation. I don't know if we'll finish it next week or not, um, especially if we have some other presentations, but, um, I, I, the, if, maybe in June, we would finish it and hopefully have a meeting with council to present it, which I think has also been in discussion. By the way, I, I did, I think, I don't know if it was the city manager mentioned it, but I think that they mentioned about having a joint meeting as part of their regular meeting, one of their upcoming meetings. Did you want to discuss anything now, Commissioner Geson, or you want to wait till next week?
Well, I can wait, I just had a question back to the pickleball courts. Um, Joel, do you know, I mean, I can understand getting the process going if we are gonna move forward in recommending twelve new pickleball courts at a location to be determined. Um, is there also any, do you know if there's any funding already talked about or anything going on with council, because I've heard some things from council of spending money at DeMuth currently to convert the final tennis court to four new courts, wind screens, any kind of improvements?
If that, I, I not officially heard any of that, I know there, there might have been some conversation, but officially to engineering, my department to to be asked to do something or look at that, that hasn't come to me yet.
Okay, so, and again, with pickleball, I just feel like it's growing, it's a huge demand, it was, I don't know that we can survive a whole nother season to wait for twelve courts. And I'd rather see the one hundred and fifty currently, and again, maybe this is a conversation to have with the city manager to see what talk has been done with council, because sometimes things happen that we don't uh, know about that get approved, but I'd rather see the hundred and fifty go towards improvements at DeMuth and make it, you know, add, adding those four courts would be a tremendous help to especially the seasonal numbers, um, and it will at least help out for the next season while we are developing additional twelve courts. Um, wind screens are so badly needed, and it would alleviate all that talk over the wall and all that other stuff that was happening. And just at least complete those sixteen courts and make, do it right. And I don't know the, how much that's gonna cost, but I'd rather see that now. Then we can discuss the bigger picture, and again, I think there's some, I know that there's been some discussion with council and possibly adding tennis courts at another location, so again, I just would like that a little more ironed out, because I think.
Yeah, if I could just give, uh, could, convert that to a request, if we could determine, is, is there anything else that's, was mentioned that is included in this, or is this just exactly the new courts, and would converting that court require additional Measure J, or is there another source?
Right, yeah, and we can get back to you on that, but, uh, what's in front of you today is strictly for the twelve new courts.
Okay, so, so then.
Got it, right, yeah, if there is, there might be additional requests for funding to do that, but in this particular request, twenty two, twenty four pickleball courts is strictly for what was presented as part of the overall community initiated projects that was brought forward to the commission that then recommended it be part of the bigger Measure J.
Okay, Commissioner Robin?
Yes, on the, on this point, and, and a and a question, a question for next session if possible. Uh, if Joel, if you or one of your colleagues could help answer this one with pickleball for a project request for a location that other, other than the annexing of the last tennis court at DeMuth, other than that, how realistic would a timeline look like, or would a realistic timeline look like to ident- Or would a realistic timeline look like to identify, secure? And then plan and build pickleball facilities, given that we don't know where it would go. Yeah, that's a lot, that's a long, it's a long version with a punchline, which is, we're being asked to set aside a million dollars. For a delivery in an unknown, unknown location at an unknown date.
Right, for this year, I was only recommending a hundred and fifty thousand to start the conversation and look at the. Yeah, realistically, uh, my, my, I was budgeting for two years from now, right, for next year. Next year's cycle would be the full million dollars and hopefully by then we would have had more.
That, that's really what the hundred and fifty is for, like, to design.
And realistically, right, we have so many projects where that's gonna fall in the parties is another question, right?
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at it from a, from a land use perspective. Where does it come from? And how long does it take?
Yeah, it would probably take a, it would be within an existing city. At a park somewhere.
Then how do you allocate a hundred and fifty thousand for design if we don't even know where they're going? Because.
Right, conversations have to be had with different missions and agreements have to be, you know, reached as to the actual location. Whether we engage a consultant to do that for us or we do it before that, those are things that are still to be pushed out. This was presented as a community project. I brought it forward. I don't have any of those answers.
Okay, so the other question, just when you look at this, is the hundred and fifty just designed or would that also cover analysis of where it can go? But we don't have to go, we know that we don't have the answer.
Commissioner, I don't have the answer, but you know, if, if I, if I were doing a project, I would say a hundred and fifty thousand, we hire a consultant to help us to.
You made it yourself.
Yeah, now I get this process to get somewhere, but yeah, it's a, it's a, there's still a lot of questions to be answered.
Okay, Commissioner Soto.
Yeah, just two quick comments because I know we're out of time. Uh, so I, I just kind of wanna like remind everyone. The Victoria and Ruth Party Park bathrooms were conceived and thought of in twenty eighteen. And so those are like necessary park. Things that needed to get done that still took several years. And I understand pickleball is a very exciting and, and growing in popularity. Um, but in the scope of things, there are still things that are very much needed that still took several years. And so I just, I just kind of put that out there when we're talking about pickleball. Um, and then second is a question. Around the library or model tool. Um, so I know the last time we were talking about the library. I don't know, one of the times we were talking about the library, um, it was recommended by the subcommittee. That there'd be like a park. A sunrise park strategic, like, wh- what do we want from sunrise park overall? Side with the, yeah, the master plan for sunrise park to coincide with the library. Is that included in the remodel or are we assuming the remodel is just gonna happen with or without the strategic plan for the park? How, how do those two things drive?
I think Don can expand a little bit.
Yeah, so, so.
It's a grant and let me see if I can. And is really to do the remodel, the infrastructure that's badly needed, it's contained within the library. It's a grant that, that's paying for infrastructure upgrades of the existing facility. So it doesn't include anything outside of there. So Don, correct me if I'm wrong or elaborate a little bit.
Yeah, so if you go to CIP six, um, I put a blurb about that grant that, um, Genie, the library director, um, applied for. She expects to hear back if we got the grant, um, sometime this summer. But specific to that grant, it just pays for. Like, it, it, the, it prioritizes. Infrastructure. So, um, so if we get this grant, we, we're gonna have to move quickly. Because you do have to spend all the money by March thirty first, twenty twenty six. So as you know, um, so, um, in your, in those pages, we listed all the possible things that could be. Uh, that we did put in the grant application, but these are like, um, renovating exist, the existing library. If we do not get the grant, um, obviously we could go back to what the community. Uh, you know, that whole master plan process and what does. You know, what that all entails as far as using the current library in the context of. Um, the rest of the uses at Sunrise Park. But if we do get the grant. Um, it does force us to shift gears and just move really quickly, um, as far as, um. Working on renovating what's already there. So that's, that's the key differences. So if we don't get the grant, um, obviously we have the luxury to do that. Really robust community prod, process. But if we do not, if we do get the grant, um, we would like to use, you know. Uh, those millions of dollars. So, um, we're basically kind of forced to do the remodel.
I understand, I understand. Um, I know we have to go. I just wanna also just ask people to do one more thing. Because there's a number of things that we had in our discussions that we had tabled for various reasons, including like almost all the other parks stuff. Where we, we asked, it was twenty projects and we asked them to do it. So what I'm just concerned is that. Because of this, the way we're flowing now is that those, as well as the ones that are sort of on the back page here, like the Mizal. And, and, and the cultural center, when we have our discussion, we need to bring those in. And we may end up as placeholders. We may say we want a, a million dollars a year for the, whatever, you know, for parks until they figure out what it is. But I just want to make sure we don't skip over them and forget them and, and, and because, you know, engineering is not sure about the. Or a city is not sure about the cultural center or whatever, or the Plaza Theater, or the, the park, the Palm Canyon Theater, that we don't just. Forget that we, we actually recommended doing something. Is there any other commissioner comments before we go? Okay.
I would like to ask that if, if commissioners, uh, can review each of the sheets and the notes in the back. Cause some of the questions might come up from there. And between now and the next meeting, if you have questions, if you can get them to us. Writing an email, that would be very helpful because then I could be more prepared. We're gonna try to get the fire chief here. And the police to talk about the, the two projects. Um, but it would be helpful to have questions ahead of time. Maybe the questions can be answered already in the notes that we provided to you.
So one of the things I would ask is that we have that whole list of parks projects. If we can make sure that has gone to the parks and rec commission and or. Genie, I guess she was now still running, also running parks. So that they can weigh in, it's maybe, I don't know if it's next week or after that. But there was about twenty different parks projects.
I really appreciate that, uh, that reminder, Chair.
All right, uh, can I share a gazan?
No, never mind. Um, yeah, there's definitely, if we choose not to do a few things, we can afford. To build in those that you mentioned, so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we have to, I wanted to see everything and make sure we see everything. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Second?
Well, second.
Okay, it is seven thirteen PM, Wednesday, May eleventh. The meeting is adjourned and I will see everyone next Thursday.
Thank you, everyone.
That was good. Thank you.
Thank you.